This conference will now be recorded.
And reciting my allegiance and stay standing at, while we're out in the birth praise, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So once again, Father, we thank you so much for bringing us together. We thank you for helping us with technical difficulties and we thank you that you're the God of control of everything. We ask you to be with us as many high decisions.
We love you for your name. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call please, Jill.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Woodham. Mr. Carey.
Here.
Ms. Lively. Mr. Piercy.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Here.
Mr. Coon. Mr. Burris.
Here.
And Ms. Yoon. Here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Sorry there was a delay at the beginning of the meeting. We had technical difficulties and just now got them rectified. Public participation. There's no one here this evening, so I won't read the paragraph. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comments to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there someone this evening more?
We were not able to ask them beforehand, so I was going to get them just to sound in to make sure that not what to get since we were able to ask. I think we get that.
Steve didn't want to talk.
Yes, he was ready to talk. That's why I wasn't sure.
Hi Larry. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you guys were having problems. I thought the problem was at my end, so I'm sorry for that.
That's fine. Are you saying something this evening or are you just?
No, but I'm going to be quiet now because I think this has the potential of being a record-setting short meeting tonight by looking at the agenda. So thank you.
It's not going to be a record-setting short meeting. I can assure you that this evening because it already started 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is list. Claims report. Claims dated August 27, 2024 through September 9, 2024. Meeting minutes. City Council meeting minutes, August 26, 2024. Permit report, August 2024. Fire report, August 2024. Police report, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of city staff before we proceed? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Mr. Piercy.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Ms. Yoon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report. Business news. Congratulations to Bracket and Company on their business opening at 216 West Washington Street this past Saturday. It was quite an event. I had the privilege of attending and assisting in the ribbon-cutting ceremony and there were a lot of people down there. So that was very, very nice. The Monticello Chamber of Commerce State of the City address will be Thursday, September 12th at 4:00 PM at the Livingston Center. Please RSVP with Cali by tomorrow. I think the guest speaker is Mr. Summers, if I'm not mistaken.
And Ms. McFarland.
And Ms. McFarland, okay. Summers End Concerts at Allerton Park Friday, September 13th at 6:00 PM at the Gate House lawn. Piatt County Trailblazers is holding their September Barrel Race on Friday, September 13th at 5:00 PM. The Illinois High School Rodeo State Show will be September 14th and 15th at the Trailblazers facility. The citywide garage sales are scheduled for September 19th through 22nd. To register your location or get a map, visit the Monticello Chamber of Commerce site. Railroad Days is September 21st and 22nd at the Monticello Railway Museum. Okay, moving on. Business. Fiscal year 2024 up budget update discussion only. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to take just a brief opportunity before we get into budget discussions for FY 2025, just to give you an update, kind of where we are with some revenue and where we are with some expenditures for the current school year. And then hopefully you can follow along with the charts and graphs. Welcome any questions that you might have. Finance Director Matt Caffs here tonight, so if I can't answer them, she can probably answer them. I didn't let her know that before, right now. So real quick, the first slide, if you will, those are the different funding departments that we have with City of Monticello. General Fund, Water Works, Sanitation, Motor Fuel Tax, TIF District, and Business District. Slide number two, the general fund. There's a lot of things that go into the general fund. Fire and Rescue, Public Works, Aquatic Center, Recreation, Capital Improvements, Police, and Administration. So, third slide, and this is through the three largest revenue sources that we collect, taxes that we collect. And this shows you those three, property tax, sales tax, and CPPRT. CPPRT stands for Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax. I will note, actually, the last two years, income tax has been higher than the property tax. In 2022, the income tax was a little over $968,000 and 2023, the income tax was almost $950,000. So you can see where most of the revenues come from, from the general fund aspect of things. Obviously, 2022, we had a huge increase in the Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax, decreased a little bit in 2023. We budgeted, the FAR column is proposed 2024, so we budgeted $2 million. We usually budget the revenues a little bit conservative as we do the budget each year. The property tax, that is, that from 2019 to 2024, represent a 4.9% tax increase. You'll see a little bit of jump in 2024. That is because of the $246,000 bond revenue for Buchanan Street and Grant Street. So that's why that's a little bit more than that normal, 4.9%. CPPRT through July of each year, the average funded amount ranged from 67% to 78%. So from 19 to 23, that was kind of the range, 67% to 78% at this, in July of those years. Currently, through July of this year, we are 84% funded. So we should be doing well with the CPP as far as what we projected. The sales tax for July for each of those years ranged from being funded 57% to 61%. Currently, through July, sales tax is funded 67%. Like, there was some, I think the state of Illinois, if you recall, decreased or kind of abolished the grocery sales tax on groceries. There's no way for us to track what that represents in real time for us. Cali and I, I think Mora, have kind of reached out to different communities and it varied widely on what they were anticipating not expecting from sales tax. But at least through 58% of the year, which is through July of this year, we are 67% funded. And again, part of that is due to a conservative revenue estimate. General Fund, total general fund revenues include Aquatic Center Recreation revenues, miscellaneous revenues, cleanup weekends, the permits, licenses, and franchise agreements. So there's other revenues that we witness and allocate for, but those three along with income tax are the big three or four. Currently, through July of this year, we are 86% funded for the general revenue. And then, general fund expenditures, we are through July, administration is at 45%, police is at 42%, fire and rescue is at 59%, works is at 42%, recreation is at 51%, the aquatic center is at 64%. So revenue seem to be okay, doing well, meeting or exceeding what we budgeted. Hopefully, that continues. And then our expenditures, as always, were pretty fiscally responsible on our expenditures and that shows with, again, 58% through the year and we're down in the 40 to mid 60% spend. Any questions on general fund revenues, expenditures through July? The next slide, I always do is showing this one and the following one. So, property tax rate payable 2024. Where does your property taxes go? And you all should probably get this question a lot when you're at the grocery store or out and about. And please keep these slides, bring them with you when we get into 2025 budget discussions. But there's a lot of information passed along to your constituents. As you can see, the school district gets 3.674%. I did a $200,000 house just for monetary value. So, school district, 3.674%, $3,362. Piatt County, 1.121% or $1,026. City of Monticello is in third with 0.755% or $691. You can see the rest. Parklands, 483 bucks. The Allerton Public Library is $175. Monticello Township, $104. Monticello Road District, $74. Forest Preserve Park is $68. So that's something you can share with your constituents if you're asked about that.
Now, that, that's the rate, that's what somebody that has a $200,000 house would pay. Is that correct?
Those monetary figures are what a $200,000 house pays. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Slide number five, property tax rate payable 2024. Monticello, this is a graph based upon different tax rates for a lot of municipalities. Some are comparable, some are just in Piatt County. Monticello's at 6.538. It ranges, you can see on there, it ranges from, you know, Mansfield, 8.791%, Hammond, 8.814%. I think the lowest one is actually, we're second lowest, White Heath is just below us at 6.335%. That's something else you might want to share with your constituents when asked. There's a lot of communities that have a higher, some much higher, tax rate than Monticello. Any questions on that? Okay. Slide number six, Water Works. Burns Clancy and Associates does a study. They did one in 2019, which is the light blue or blue numbers. And then they did one in 2023 on the water rates or water rates based upon seven units of water. Seven units of water is probably a typical four-person household. It's told by the water department that each person uses about two units for, so seven or eight units for a four-person. Monticello water rate in 2019 was $26.58 and in 2023 is $31.08. You can see it, it kind of is all over the board. Monticello was definitely far from the highest, but we're not the lowest either, but far, far, far from the highest. It was interesting to see our Jenna was, 2019 was $68.25, 2023 was $90. Mohammed, $33.62 in 2019 and $40.70 in 2023. So, water rates definitely were not, definitely not the largest there. Water Works expenditures through July, we're at, again, 58% through the year. Water Works expenditures are at 48%. We're doing well in the water department as far as spending. The Water Works reserves, the reserves, they have just under $400,000 in reserves. And just to give you an idea of what $400,000 is, the annual operations and maintenance for the Water Works is $1,144,000. Almost $400,000 in reserves. Anything on water? We go to sewer? Okay, sewer, it's the same, 2019 survey, 2023 survey presented by Burns Clancy and Associates. Obviously, Monticello in 2019, we were $49. 2023, we're $73.50. I will say that Mora and Nancy did a wonderful job for FY 2024. I believe in the first year, we did 50 cents, 50 cents instead of the $1 increase per unit. So we cut that from $1 per unit of sewer. We cut that down to 50 cents. And definitely, again, we're not the highest sewer rates and we're definitely not the lowest. Some of the highest, again, our Jenna, you know, 2019, we were $49. They were $78.41. 2023, we're $73.50. They're $93. Bless you. So, a lot of information for sewer department. Again, their expenditures through July, they're 49%. They're doing well as far as their spending. Also, sewer is definitely doing a lot better in their reserves. As of December last year, they had 1.5 million in reserves in their annual operations and maintenance and loan payment for the wastewater treatment plant, which we got that in 2016 and it's like 40-year loan, 40 years, 2056 or so. So anyway, that annual operations and maintenance and loan payment is $1,046,000. So we have a year's worth of O&amp;M and loan payment in the wastewater. That does not include the capital improvements for sanitation, which would be collection system and any plant upgrades, anything we might want to do. So, O&amp;M and loan is just status quo for what we have and no capital improvements. We've spent a lot of money each year on the collection system. We've been doing that for quite a while now. So that is not included in that annual loan payment. Anything on sewer? Motor fuel tax, you'll see the top line on the chart, and again, this is from 2019 to 2024. Motor fuel tax, that's a reserves. 2019, we had roughly 5.8 million. 2022 dipped down to 4.2 million and currently, or at the end of 2023, we had 4.7 million. If you recall, those reserves are for a particular project, the Old Route 47 Bridge over the Sangin River. We are still working on that. So motor fuel tax, we're still, we still have those reserves to do that project. The revenue, revenue through July of this year was $200,000. So that revenue is 62% funded through 58% of the year. So motor fuel tax seems to be doing okay as well. Tax increment financing, District Number Two or TIF Two, that is, has steadily done well over the years. Expenditures in the TIF include TIF agreements, water tower bond payment, economic development programming. If you recall, this year, you see a, there's Burke Park and Freedom Park bond payments in the TIF District. And infrastructure improvements this year included nearly $1 million, thereabouts, for the Thewar No new road and subsequent infrastructure, the Innovation Parkway down by the relocated bus service. So, MFT reserves, we're doing what we needed to do for, or tax increment finance seems to be doing well as far as revenues and our expenditures. What's on TIF? Did I tell everybody there's going to be a quiz after this? Okay. All right, last slide. Business District. If you recall, Business District began in January of 2020, the boundary of which was expanded in July of 2023. Expenditures include building improvement program, Burke Park and Freedom Park bonds, and other miscellaneous community improvement projects. It's doing well. I think, I think we're going to fall a little bit short of that 550 from the Business District proposed in 2024, and that's probably related to the grocery sales tax abatement. So, but we'll see where we fall with that one. And at the end of 2023, that fund to balance or reserves, 900, almost $975,000. So we spend a lot of money on filling approval grant each year and those are well received. It's an excellent example of public-private partnership, the private side of that. Cali can definitely give you more information than I, but millions, millions of dollars have been spent inside the Business District boundary. So that is a great addition to community development efforts. So, any questions on Business District?
Just to make a comment. Yeah, I went to the open, to the grand opening on Saturday and I stood outside because it was crowded in the place. Anyway, I can't remember, but there were a large number of citizens who congratulated us for the improvements that have been, that are noticeable on the square. Everyone's excited about what's happening downtown District. So I think that's worth to be commended for seeing this program through and continuing to have it grow. So.
Yeah.
It's money well spent.
It is a big program. Questions? Okay, that's it. Update.
Nobody has any questions?
It's running smoothly.
Yeah, it's kind of scary, isn't it? Okay, all the persons report. We'll start with Cole.
No, sure enough, Mike.
Old Tom?
Nothing.
Eli?
Just, I'm railing about old Tom and young Tom.
Old Tom.
Old Tom Jr. Yeah, no, yeah.
Wendell?
Not really. I had the opportunity today in my cruising around to find an open parking place on the west end of Main Street, Washington Street. So I stepped across and the two gentlemen that are remodeling 219 were there. The front door was open, so I stepped in. They've come a long way. They've got a long ways to go. But it is significant improvement to what was there. Obviously, you can see the outside of the building. That's thousands, literally thousands and thousands of dollars for the stucco. So they've got a ways to go. They're starting to do the inside infrastructure. He said maybe in the next couple days. There's a bunch of tubefors nailed up, but no, nothing else. So, and he showed me around, showed me what they intended to do and where it intended to go. And it will be nice. They proposed seating inside for about 50 people and they're going to put a cover over the patio out front, the patio area. So when the weather's decent, they'll be able to add another 25 seats in the concrete area out front. So they're, they're rolling along, but it'll, they'll be pushing to have it done by November sometime if they're lucky. So, but it's going to be, it'll be interesting to step in and look at it. It's quite a change from, from what's been there for the last roughly 100 years. It's a long time. Other than that, things look good. When's the asphalt? I see they're moving the grinder tonight. Is the asphalt coming in yet this week or?
Weather permitting, it should be Thursday start.
I saw they were loading the grinder and taking it out tonight. Looks good. That's all I got.
Thank you. Eric?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Police Chiefs report. Chief Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The officers are really pulling together, covering quite a few shifts to let other officers that have worked over 100 hours overtime to get some days off. So everyone's kind of flexing shifts, working extra, really pulling together. The, I received an invitation to Faith Christians. I'll be going to talk to one of their classes tomorrow morning. And then September 26th, the third grade classes are all coming, I think, to the city building, to the police department, places as part of their community day. We do have safety skills scheduled for the schools. When the big relocation drill happens, when they all come down to the community building, we'll put a press release out, try to go ahead and get a couple of city staff members to help with that, just make sure the kids can cross. Really, it's Marion and Washington that we kind of worry about. New cameras went live last week or the week before. They're working very well. Thank you for doing the appropriations on that. We have gotten rid of the old cameras and the new ones are working much, much better. Beyond that, just the weekend ban competition. So Pratt's Road is going to be closed, I believe, from Market Street to Hamilton. So if people can avoid that, we have, I believe, 17 buses. So, if people can avoid that, we have, I believe, 17 buses that we're going to have to fit in there, so people will drive it around.
It's more like, it'll be more like twice that many buses because it's 17 schools.
17 schools, so yeah, with kids being there.
Right. Anything else? Any questions of Chief Ross? Thanks, John. And now, Fire Chiefs report. Chief Repke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We ran 42 calls last month, kind of a slow month, kind of nice in the hot weather. We did some training, we did small power tools training, we get the tools out of the trucks and start working with them. We don't use them that much, kind of forget how to use them sometimes, so we try to, on a regular basis, get them out and start them up and make sure they're running properly and train on how to use them. The second week, we went out to our burn containers out near the driving range and lit a fire in the burn containers and worked with putting that out and deploying the hoses and doing that. Third week, we had Carl come out and do patient assessment. Bulk of our calls, as you can see, are medical, so patient assessment is an important educational tool that we need. It was a busy month for training, so we had an extra week, and we came out and did equipment maintenance on all the vehicles and so forth. We also did an extra day of training, we did sports, football spine and other injuries. Carl came out and trained the firefighters on what to do if we have these spine injuries at the football games. And just so happens, we had one the following Monday at a freshman game, and went like Clockworth, knew exactly what to do, helped the kid out, he was from the opposing team, but got his gear off, got him on the backboard, got him to the hospital, he's fine, but it's kind of nice to, after we did the training, we had, not that we want somebody to get hurt, but we knew what to do. Also, I want to remind you, well, two things. We lost a firefighter, resigned this month, at the end of the month. Kid resigned, I was going to tell you about that. And then we have two firefighters that hopefully will start, they'll be up for your vote at the next meeting. Present those to Jill and present those, so losing one, gaining two. Also, on October 12th, I think that's before my next meeting here, is the open house at the firehouse. Welcome everybody to come out and see us. I know, Mr. Mayor, you came out and looked last year, it's going to be just about as, probably as good or better than what we did last time, so have a lot of different.
I just hope it doesn't rain. Wasn't it wet last year? It was not?
It was overcast, yeah, it was kind of, wasn't nice and sunny and cool, like it should be in October, but.
I expect it to be better, so.
Yes, we hope so too, so. We have a lot of different events planned, and I hope you guys can come out and see that. There'll be posters all over town to present that. I believe that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of the chief? Thanks a lot, John. The administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to give a quick update on Grant and Buchanan, but Wendell asked me that already, so I will be absent at the next city council meeting, be in, outside of Illinois.
I'll be gone too for the next one, so.
That's all I have.
We got it. We got it.
You have it covered, okay. I won't worry at all. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor, I?
Aye.
You?